Everybody.
I bought just for today.
It is 6:36 on Monday, October 2nd, 2017, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. First, we're gonna approve our minutes from September 19th. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any edits, questions, comments?
Bless you.
Bless you. Nothing? Alright, all in favor to approve the minutes from September 19th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Visitors' comments? Do we have any visitors with comments? Okay.
General class meeting on the 19th. Were you at the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I have pictures to put up.
Everybody was here last time.
Yes.
But thank you for checking. Okay, no visitors' comments? Moving on to student representative report.
So, all the groups have been getting started with their plans for the year, like yearbook is collecting photos, student council is solidifying its plans for this year's cotillion, sports teams are doing well, and then everyone is just kind of getting into the swing of the new year. This is just the start of October. Okay. So, last month's SSEC meeting, state student advisory council meeting went well. Each work group laid out its goals for the year and then timeline. They'd like to have all the things accomplished by. And the groups are civics and then wellness, which then split into mental health and wellness policy. And there's also an executive council being formed, which is one delegate from each council in the regions A and B. So, one delegate from each of those in one region who take lunch during the SSEC meetings to talk with the advisors of SSEC, the chairperson and the vice chair about the decisions and conversations that the board of education has been having and like decisions they've been making. And then we discuss what's going on in our own schools with them. So, this Friday is the first RSEC meeting. It's the regional student advisory council meeting of the year. So, the state delegates will be presenting each topic discussed at the summer conference with all the RSEC members. And then they'll decide what topic or topics they think are most important or interesting to work on for the year. And then they'll also make a timeline for the progress of the year and then set the goals that they want to accomplish. That's all happening on Friday. And then the topics that we'll be discussing are Lead the Nation, which is a tour through the whole Commonwealth, praising all the accomplishments of either individual students or school districts. Civics, which is engaging the students in history and government and politics. Things like asking them to like register to vote. And then wellness touches on well-being of students in our school districts, whether it's making sure they're having a healthy lunch or helping them have less stress and anxiety in their day-to-day life. And that sort of leads into family engagement, which is having families like touch base with the school systems and their own kids and then stay involved in their children's lives and what they're doing in school when like parent-teacher conferences are, open houses and stuff like that. And being able to help with homework if need be. Overall, just being an active member in their students' lives, their kids' lives, making sure that they're doing well like in and out of their classroom. And then the last topic was the achievement gap, which talked about how depending on a whole variety of factors, such as race and geography, some students don't have the same level of success in their education as other students do. So, once the students at the RSEC meeting hear of all the topics, they'll decide what they want to work on for the year and then I'll bring that decision back to you guys and keep you informed about what's happening.
Any questions?
That's a lot of stuff.
A lot, dude.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, each delegate is like taking one like topic to do a presentation on.
It's just all so important.
Yeah. It's like, what do you choose?
Exactly.
One thing, yeah.
So, these topics that RSEC focuses on, do they align with what SSEC does?
Yeah, so, all the topics that we learned about or like were discussed at the summer conference are all things that the departments also are working on. Like, those are the things that we get to work on too because they're working on it. So, we hear about them at the state level and we get to choose between that, what we want to do. And then the same ideas are also brought to the RSEC so then they can choose, not just like whatever the state level wants, but like what they want to choose to, you know? So, it can differ from the state level, but it could also be the same thing.
Do you guys have the same problem with how to share your work at RSEC with the school districts? Or is it in better shape? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. It's the same thing because it's just about sending like final reports and stuff to the advisors and then like revising and stuff. And if the advisors kind of fall through, then like you can't...
You guys have to revolt?
Yeah, no. I mean, I wasn't aware of that issue when I joined last year, but... But definitely, if that is like an issue, because I don't know if it was like we just ended up not getting it or if it was other schools, but like I'm definitely gonna find out like what's going on with that and then see if I can like fix that issue as much as I can and other students can.
Because it seems like, I agree with you. This is a lot of stuff and each time I hear about these things, I'm impressed that, you know, they're focusing on these things. If we don't hear about these or this doesn't go anywhere, it's just a lot of good work down on a Friday or Thursday and then it disappears. So, there has to be a better way of disseminating this.
I wonder if the... So, there are delegates from all of the districts. If the school committees got together in the local area and had the delegates present on each of them to a joint meeting of the boards. And that way, even if it wasn't trickling back, at least the delegates would have, you know, a venue, so to speak, to share to more than just their own school committee.
Right. The issue with that is like, because I think that's a good idea. It's just that we are having a recruitment issue. We don't have, like, Granby does, but I know... South Hadley doesn't have any delegates. Belshan doesn't have delegates.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't, because they're not at the meetings. Chigbee has, like, it's because they have the three schools, so they have like two. It's like weird how it happens. Like, one of my friends was like the one person elected to be a delegate, but then there were like two alternates. It was like a weird system because there's three schools. I know other schools in this district, like there are a lot of districts that don't have representation in this. And it's not just in like Western Mass, like it's across the whole Commonwealth. Like, there's just a lot of school districts that don't have it. So, it's also the issue because like, two people who are on the state level, like with me, they're both from Northampton, so they brought the information back to their school district, which is why they have that information. They have started to implement programs that like we worked on last year because they brought that back themselves. So, if we all did that, I wasn't aware that that was not getting to you guys. Otherwise, that, you know, but a lot of school districts don't have that same opportunity for their like delegates from that school to bring the information back because they don't, they're not even in the program.
Wow.
So, it's, yeah, we're trying to work on that too. It wasn't as successful as it should have been last year because then there's also the issue of like getting a list and then sending it out. And if the final reports and stuff aren't getting out, then it's like... What is, yeah, so, but...
It's good to know.
Well, thanks for your service on behalf of Granby at the state level.
Thank you, Annabelle.
Thank you.
Also aligning with what we're trying to do, you know, the voice of the students, voice of the community type of thing. Maybe we can, we can talk to the other committees and say, you know what, maybe you would like to find some students who would be interested in these. And then get them together at a meeting like this and make it a separate meeting, but at least have an occasion for it.
Well, and you wonder why the recruitment problem. Is it, is it a district issue, just not putting emphasis on the program? Is it finding young people who are civically minded and want to be engaged in that way?
So, at the regional level, I don't know, I don't know why. At the state level, you have to go to those meetings every other month in Malden. And it can be, as you know, as we experienced, that can be a problem because you have to find someone who would like to drive in their first three meetings in the summer, three consecutive days in Malden. And obviously, they're too young to stay at a hotel by themselves. Somebody has to be there or they have to commute from Western Massachusetts back and forth, which we did. I drove three days to Malden so that, you know, a group of students would have the opportunity to participate in these meetings. And not everybody is, understandably, not everybody is willing to do that.
Because if you don't go to the meetings in August, you can't be a delegate.
And exactly, just they disqualify you. And just like many other things...
That's quite a commitment.
Well, this thing, okay, they say that. It also is really weird though because at the same time, they'll say that, but then sometimes you can get elected back in because we always have an issue with it because we're all the way out here. So, it's like two and a half hours in and like maybe three hours back. So, one of the kids who couldn't make it, he got, well, sort of elected back in as a delegate, but it's like really weird. So, you kind of have to be there also because he doesn't know what's happening. So, it's like pretty important to go, which...
So, there is that delineation still. Thank you, Annabelle. And if you need to leave, feel free to leave at any time. Okay, thanks. Moving on to new business. I will actually present that one.
Yes, so we have here tonight two more of our teachers who are receiving professional status, professional teaching status. And I don't know, would he be willing to help me out in doing that?
Maybe.
Maybe. Can you come help me? No? That's okay. You never know. I'm a little scary, but that's okay.
So, if we can have Carolyn Ritter and Crystal Dufresne. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Solon.
So, like we said...
I'm all thrown off because I don't have my helper.
I don't know where to stand over here. But like we said last month, this is professional teacher status as teachers who have been in the district for three years and have been rated proficient or higher according to the teacher rubric on all four standards. So, this is really a tribute to their hard work, dedication to our students and professional growth. So, we're really fortunate to have such dedicated people working with our students.
And I wanted to say thank you to both of you. You go above and beyond every day. You're involved in more than just the classroom. You're involved in the extracurricular, the co-curricular, and congratulations on this very well-earned effort.
Congratulations, both of you.
Thank you.
If you want to say anything, they'll give you the floor.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I don't want to say anything.
It's your moment.
I think that just we're happy to be here.
You know, last time we had a table-sized cake. You guys missed that one, but maybe we'll do it again.
I think our weight sizes are okay.
Okay. Next, we have our nurse leader presentation. It says FY 1617. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay.
Oh, you want to go inside? All right, Dana. Yeah.
I'm where Dan was in her location.
Oh, I had thrown a chair over there, but...
Oh, yeah, that.
Yeah, so you should just be able to... Does anybody need a water? Water, good.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna discuss our annual report that we have to submit to the Department of Public Health every June. So, these are numbers based off of last year's school year. So, right up there is the definition of school nursing from the National Association of School Nursing. They actually just updated this in February. And it's just talking about the specialized practice of nursing and the different things that we do, you know, based on evidence-based practice and that we're leaders in bridging healthcare and education into the school community, as well as many other hats that we wear. So, school nursing is continuing to evolve. If you keep hitting the tab, Steve, it'll pop up. So, these are the many and multiple hats. So, there's some of the hats that we do wear. As I discussed also last year, they pretty much are evolving. But right now, care coordination, community, public health, leadership and other roles are continuing to impact what we do. Every year is different. All the needs are different, but we're really trying our best to keep up with what's going on. So, again, we're also addressing several different health conditions in the district. Right now, we're dealing with diabetes. We're also dealing with students who have cystic fibrosis in school, life-threatening and mild allergies that require EpiPens. Students with seizure disorders who may or may not require meds in school. Asthma. Students with ADHD who may or may not require meds in school as well. And then physical and developmental conditions, as well as mental health issues as well. We are starting to see a lot more kids with depression and mental health issues and it's starting to come into even the younger grades, even at West Street. That's becoming a trend that we weren't necessarily seeing before, but we are starting to see more now in prevalence. So, as of this last school year, 56.5% of the student body was identified as having a health condition in the district, which is a larger number than we had last year. 16 needed individualized healthcare plans, which are plans that we do as nurses to specifically identify the nursing care they're gonna need during the school year. We had 82 students on 504 plans. Two kids needed asthma action plans in case their asthma acted up in school. And then we had 23 students who needed allergy action plans who required epinephrine if they needed so.
May I see a question?
Yeah.
Were those numbers supposed to add to that 410? Not, right?
They're part of that.
Part of that. And when we say 410, 410 were identified as having a health condition?
In the district, yeah.
That is a, that is a permanent or long-term condition? Not just, I got sick today, I got a cold?
No, these are chronic health conditions, like the ones that I just spoke of in the last slide. And some of those kids out of that 410 have more than one condition. You see a lot of kids with life-threatening allergies who also have the cormoditidis asthma, which even puts them at a higher risk of going into anaphylaxis because of that correlation. We had almost 10,000 clinic visits last year and that's a 2.85 increase from the previous school year. And those are the breakdowns of totals of students who weren't able to return to class and either were sent home for illness or injury or sent out or either sent to the guidance or the principal for whatever reason. But we did have a more, almost 2% improvement in kids returning back to class from the previous school year. So, that's a good thing. And we're still higher than the state average for DPH and DUCY.
So, the 40 number referred to guidance or school principal? I suspect that that's for the mental health issues.
There might be mental health. We have kids who come in, let's say there's an incident going on and they come sent to us for assessment and then they can't go back to class because there needs to be an investigation. They would be sent to the principal's office or guidance, depending on what's going on. The challenge that we're facing in the elementary school right now is our social worker is split between the two schools on different days. So, sometimes we're having to kind of overlap and kind of address some things in the clinic that she normally would take care of to the best of our ability because she's not in the building.
And does that mean more psychosomatic symptoms?
Yes.
Upset stomachs, headaches?
Headaches, yes.
That kind of thing?
Yeah.
And it's more related to anxiety and depression than it is to...
Some, yes. And some kids have conditions that they're chronic in nature, depending on what's going on. But we also see those psychosomatic issues as well. So, last year, we gave over 2,500 medications. These are just the lists of the meds that we were given last year and that's about a 20% increase from the previous school year, just based on the needs of the kids and what's going on in the building.
Question on the previous one.
Yeah.
Do we know if the increase that you're talking about, about a 3% increase, do we know whether that corresponds to specific categories or is it across-the-board increase of up to 2% to 3%?
It's an increase across the board of how many kids we're seeing in the clinic.
But is it, was there a particular category that had more increase than others?
I'd have to go back and pull up more data. That's just the general number from all of the last school's total numbers of visits.
Okay, thanks.
So, we're also, like I was talking about, addressing issues with mental health. We've worked with kids with grief counseling, social skills support, relationship guidance, substance abuse and behavioral assessments, coping and reassurance, as well as self-harm and suicidal ideation and stress reduction. So, like I said before, we're starting to see this in larger numbers. In our PNAS survey results we got back from the collaborative a couple of weeks ago, that 8, 10 and 12th graders completed in April is reflecting, there are a lot of kids that are in need of more mental health services. So, that's something we're definitely gonna have to start touching base on because it's, the kids are identifying a need for help with that. So, we also have kids who get hurt in and outside of school. We've had a couple of kids with school-related concussions and non-school-related concussions. We treat them still the same way with the return-to-play policy and protocols, as well as accident reports. We did have to call 911 for students and staff last year, as well as mental health and other emergency services. Keep going, Steve. So, last year, we saw a lot of kids for different things between listening to lungs, doing blood pressure measurements, treating kids for nausea and vomiting, which can end up sometimes being a psychosomatic issue as well, depending on what's going on. Musculoskeletal assessments, checking kids for head lice, checking eyes, ears, all of those types of things. Go ahead. We also had a couple of kids that had to get referred out to their primary health provider, dentists, other specialists, whether it was eyes and ears, you know, orthopedics, behavioral health as well. And then we also take care of the staff as well. We have staff that come in to get blood pressure checks, check eyes. We've done head lice checks as well, given medications. And staff who also get injured on the job as well. And then if we have to call 911, we also do that as well. And we provide health education and support for the staff as well. Last year, we had started a new state mandated screening for ESPTERT and this was for substance abuse screenings for kids in 8th grade. This year, we're doing it for 8th and 10th. Last year was kind of a pilot year, but now we're, that's gonna be in full swing. We're also continuing our body mass index, hearing, postural and vision, as we normally do. This year was a great improvement with our completed referrals, especially for vision. We do have a free program where we can offer free exam, eye exam, as well as glasses through the Sites for Students program through the National Association for School Nursing. So, that's definitely helped families whose insurance may not help provide that opportunity for them.
What was ESPTERT?
So, ESPTERT is the screening for substance abuse. The nurses work with guidance and we provide like an interviewing type of process with the kids, one-to-one, behind closed doors, to see how they're doing and if there's a need for referral. And if we identify students who are at high risk, they get referred to guidance. And guidance determines whether it's something that can be addressed in-house in school or if they need a community referral. I think last year, we had one student that was referred to guidance and they were already receiving services. The rest of the students did not need to be referred. So, that's a good, that's a good start. So, communication continues to be vital for us whether we're communicating with families, school staff and community agencies. We're continuing to have dialogue with mental health providers as well and PCPs and then having group meetings as well, especially with medical 504s and pulling everybody in to work as a team. And then we're also continuing our health education when the kids are coming into the school in the clinics between asthma, diabetes, hand washing, mental health, substance abuse, self-care, safety and healthy relationships. We were able to start our puberty program last year, which had a great response, as well as hygiene at East Meadow. And then that's continuing into the health curriculum this year with the health classes with our PE teachers. And then the nurses are carrying that over into bulletin boards and other teaching items in the clinics as well. Last year, we did fluoride for 142 kids through grades 1 through 6. We did see almost an 18% decrease in the kids participating. We're not quite sure why. This may be related to the kids getting fluoride through their dentists, but we're not sure. Again, it's a free program that they have the opportunity to opt out if they don't want to participate. But we're still offering it this year and so far, we've had a good response of the families that are returning them to participate. So, I'm hoping that number will improve this year. We are continuing to have the AEDs in all of our school buildings. We were able to get a grant for an AED through the KIBS Foundation for a transportable one because the state has changed the regulations that we have to have one on the sports fields for practices and for games. So, currently, the one that's traveling is with cross-country. When they go to do frames, the coach brings it back and forth with her. And then we have the ones that are here in the building for the teams when they're practicing out back. And the staff's been getting trained. They had a training last year with Mike Pandora through Granby EMS. And we are also, as a nursing team, training the staff on how to give epinephrine to kids with diagnosed life-threatening allergies and medications that don't require nursing assessments for field trips when a nurse isn't present. We're also working on policy development and review as a department. Recently, we started looking at the field trip policies and emergency response. Again, looking at the health and wellness of the students, safety and nutrition, as well as other things that are continuing to pop up and change with our current practices. So, this is continually, continuing to be an evolving task for us. And then through NASN, for the case for school nursing, again, school nurses continue to meet the needs of all of our students with chronic health conditions. We improve attendance rates, helping kids be able to achieve more and graduate. We're promoting wellness and preventing injuries. Oh, I forgot a typo there. We help reduce the intensity of school health services here in school by addressing health disparities by having a school nurse in the building. Keep going. Again, we're continuing to address the mental health that's in the building, making sure that we're case-managing kids with chronic health conditions so that they can be in school, helping the teachers be able to teach so that they're not having to worry about other issues that are popping up in the classroom because of health-related issues. And then we wanted to just say thank you for your ongoing support and everything that we do. Without your support, we can't continue the work that we enjoy to do with focusing on all of the children every day in the classroom.
Thank you, guys.
We're also starting a collaboration with the neighbors, helping neighbors with pantry in South Hadley. This summer, Cheryl and I and David met with Maureen McCourt to start doing a backpack program called Granby to Go. And what that project is entailing is a pile... a pilot for fifth grade. And any family, regardless of their social or economic status, will can opt out at any time. It's purely confidential, but the kids will be brought, given a bag, a Granby Rams bag with five pounds of food to go home every Friday so that they can cook meals and have things at home. And then the bag will come back on Monday and we'll refill it for the next Friday for them to bring home, just to start helping address any issues that are popping up, whether it's lack of finances at home, life circumstances where things are just not accessible, that service is being provided to them. So we're still working in the logistical phase. We're hoping to start sending letters home to families this week to decide whether they want to opt in or opt out and be aware of the program and then begin the process of sending them home. And then the families, if stuff's popping up over the year, they can join at any time.
Did you say that's for fifth grade?
We're going to pilot with fifth first.
So we're piloting with fifth?
Yeah.
Okay, so the intent is to grow it if we can?
Yeah. It's a grant-funded program, which is great. So we're hoping that if we can keep getting good numbers and a good response, that we can expand it eventually to all the grades so that the kids can get what they need. Because sometimes it's the, you know, the parents do the best they can, the families do the best they can, but it trickles down to the students as well. So.
Absolutely.
The letters will go home in like a sealed envelope, so it's private. The families can return it in an envelope. This way that the kid's privacy is protected at the same time. The bags are all going to look the same like a normal school bag, so there's no, it won't be obvious hopefully to anybody that that's what's taking place, just so that the kids aren't standing out.
Thank you, that sounds great.
So getting back to the social emotional piece, you were saying that at West Street, the school social worker is going between buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Can you just say more about that? Because my sense was that there was some current concerns about just the lack of time for getting to all the needs at West Street.
So she split, she split two days, I think, at West Street and three days at East Meadow. So obviously, if we're in a crisis mode, she'll come over to the building, but she's not always there if stuff's going on. So we're having to kind of juggle multiple roles. And when she's available, she's there to help. But sometimes because she's split between two buildings, we're seeing more kids coming into the clinic. And it's the same way at East Meadow as well, just because of what's going on. But with the schools merging next year, that will obviously be changing. But again, it's like I said before, we are starting to see mental health issues starting to come down into the younger grades. So it's something that's going to, we need as a district to work on from pre-K all the way through 12 as a unit.
Do we still have River Valley Counseling coming in?
I do not know the answer to that.
Yes. I think they're coming in at the older grades.
Is it only at the high school level? Is it, is it sufficient?
I believe so on Fridays. Yeah, she does an amazing job.
But is it sufficient to meet the needs for the referrals coming in? And are we, do we need to be more, taking more initiative to make referrals?
Could we use her more? Yes.
Well, we.
But we can't because we're tied to the amount that she's allowed to take. I think she only has a certain amount of students she's able to see.
Well, yeah, but there's other, I used to work at River Valley. They have, you know, 80 clinicians over there.
Right.
So if we made a phone call and said, you know, our need is increasing, is there any way we can get another clinician over here? You know, we have another day's worth of referrals or two days' worth of referrals. They could do that. They might, they might not be able to do it immediately, but that's, that's what they do. They have a whole school-based program over there. We will look into that.
If there's, say then that, that only challenge is not the distance between the two schools for this year, but also the number, even if there was one location next year, there will be one location, the numbers may be high for one person to handle? Is that, is that what we're saying?
Well, I'm not quite sure. I think we're going to have to see where the dynamics lie. Again, it, without, I can't, I can't, I can't like, you know, make a predetermination. The distance right now is part of the problem because like I said, she's split between two buildings. What that might look like in the future, she may be able to handle it. I'm not sure. I know in previous districts that I've worked in, River Valley has come in and worked in with the younger kids. So that may be an option if she's bombarded where we need additional support. But again, it's kind of early to tell. I don't want to make a predetermination and that not end up being an issue.
And actually, I think that's the right way to approach it anyway.
Right.
I'm only seeing, I'm only asking to see whether or not we are considering different factors, distance, numbers and all that. And you're on top of it anyway. And I trust that you would bring it back to the school committee if there was a need for additional support.
Would it make sense, considering we are seeing higher levels of need, to have Charlene and who's the other social worker?
Rebecca.
Rebecca.
And Jess.
And Jess Roy.
Yeah, maybe just, you know, come in and talk, talk a little bit more about the need and.
We have had discussions about caseload and how the caseload is growing. So while the distance may be part, there is a factor that we're looking at in terms of the number and the types of crisis intervention that's happening. So, you know, this isn't, I'm going to the nurse because my stomach hurts. So, oh, you can go see, you know, the social worker and in an hour, we figured out that you had a bad morning. And so here are the strategies you can use. Now you can go back to class. We are talking about self-injurious behavior, school phobia, you know, kids refusing to go back at young ages, refusing to go to class, taking, you know, a good two to three hours to, to regulate to get them back into class. So when you're talking about what are we going to be, those are the kinds of things we look at. You know, in Granby, at the elementary level, there's no assistant principal and there's no guidance. So it's nurse and then social worker. And so I think we are going to be looking at this year, what's the best way to manage the kinds of crises that are coming? Maybe it is a social worker because that's the type of thing we're seeing. You know, we're not seeing a lot of discipline at the elementary school or the need for, you know, a vice principal at this point. The numbers of students, once they're in one building, will, would certainly warrant another person. But what would that person be doing? What kind of assistance to the school community would that person be given?
And when I see a number eight, I think it was eight calls made to crisis or 911, that's very concerning to me for psychiatric.
Mental health.
That is very concerning to me.
Yep.
And, and I completely agree, but I also understand where you're going with it. There's sometimes a risk of overreacting and really finding solutions to something that is not supported by evidence. So we can keep an eye on it because it's worthwhile to really see.
Well, I don't, I don't, I mean, this, in, it's, it's kind of a known fact right now that we're seeing anxiety and depression at epidemic levels, not only in adults, but in children as well. And, you know, there's, there's all kinds of talk about it in the clinical profession. So I think it's just start, you know, it's trickling down and.
Right. And again, the types of cases that we work with may take a day to three days because we're seeing students, we're stabilizing students, we're reaching out to families, we're organizing services for families, we're, you know, getting them in contact with community providers. You know, that can be three days worth of work for one student when, you know, there are three students that are coming in for maybe, you know, less crisis level things. But if, if we could support them sooner rather than later, we would have better outcomes with them.
And if a student is going to the nurse or to the social worker with symptoms, you've already crossed the threshold, right? So, you know, that's, that's a situation that needs to be addressed on an ongoing issue. This is not an isolated, I have a tummy ache. You know, I suspect if, you know, we started going back to the data, you're, you're going to start seeing students who are coming in more than one time.
Yeah, and it's a wide range, like Cheryl's saying too. So we have kids who are chronically in crisis mode or on that, that grap. And then we have, you know, it's different levels of where that goes. So it's, every year is different and the needs are different. It's just identifying at what point, you know, where do we go from here? So we're, we're doing the best that we can with the resources that we have right now, but we're just going to have to play very close gauge on where things go from here.
And that, that's why I, I really do believe in the school-based model because students can still continue to use their own family's insurance, right? And, and yes, it requires a lot of collaborative effort because you are pulling students out of classes, but it can be done. And if a student is receiving ongoing weekly sessions, 45-minute sessions, you know, that, that goes a long way in a very short period of time when a student is getting added support.
You know, and, and one of the things I think that we look forward to investigating is, you know, right now, a lot of what we're doing feels like crisis management as opposed to getting ahead and providing mental health care before a child is going to guidance or to the social worker. And a lot of that, I think, is what we do really well in Granby is building those strong relationships with students where a student may not be going to the nurse or acting out, but the teachers may notice a change in attitude, effort. And so recognizing that and being able to intervene for students when they're not really showing up on a radar screen. I think not only in Granby, but in the Commonwealth, there's a larger discussion about students who appear to be doing very well, but in reality, when they're screened, are actually not doing as well as we think. And those are the kids that are surprising, your valedictorians, your.
Because we're using the wrong measurements.
Exactly. Yep. And so I think, you know, using that data so that we can create programming for students to help with dealing with anxiety and pressures of school and what they're dealing with and seeing as we see today in the news.
If I can, I think part of what we need to do, we need to establish student support teams that are, that function well, that are assessing students on a regular basis, that we're getting information from teachers, parents, the student. So we can identify interventions. I always say it's important, sometimes it's just as important to identify the intervention that doesn't work. So you can figure out the one that does. And that those things need to be timed and tracked because if we're not, if we're doing something that doesn't work for four, six, eight weeks or months, then we're not doing any service to that student. But if we can identify in four weeks that it's not working and try something else or look for an outside support, then, you know, then we have a better shot at supporting that student. And that's something that we're working on. And I think our team's kind of getting sometimes maybe a little frustrated with me because I'm like, we need to have the process down. Like, we want to start referring students right now, but we don't have a process. So we're going to get stuck in the mud on every student if we don't have a process that works well for us. So we've been meeting every Monday with Athena around, around setting up that process so we can roll it out to the staff and have a referral process and follow-up process that, so it becomes a cycle.
Yeah. So is there anything else that we should be doing, especially going back to what you were suggesting should be?
Well, I think, I think to your point, we need to understand the needs better. And that, I mean, I don't think this discussion can, can be fully had.
And I don't know what that means. I mean, I'm not, you guys are the professional. I'm not, so I don't know what that means really, understanding the needs.
Well, a, a big part of it is having Charlene and her team here, you know, to, to, to begin to have this more in-depth conversation about what exactly are the needs and, you know, what, what.
Yeah. So it occurs to me, there was a task force that was brought together to discuss social emotional needs of students. And it's probably a, a good opportunity and time to bring that team back together.
Right.
To have that discussion like we're doing with the strategic plan. If anybody would like to participate in the strategic plan task force meeting, we will be meeting, we're not meeting on Wednesday, this Wednesday, we're going to meet on the 18th and the 25th. So we need a few more members. We only had six confirmed. So we'd like to get at least 12. That's a good representative number. So please contact Kathy Hereup at the superintendent's office if you'd like to get involved in that. And I, I do think probably the next step would be to reconvene the social emotional group that had community, police, fire, crisis intervention, had nurses and staff to discuss that, what the next steps might be. Because then we can dig deeper into the data.
Yeah.
What are the kinds of problems that we're seeing?
So when do we want to do that? I'm assuming we're going to want to put it on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
And, but you would need time in order to sit down with those folks and figure out how to bring it forward, right?
Yep.
Because this is a, you know, this is a large topic.
Yes. So why don't I try to bring forward a timeline for the next school committee meeting as to when that task force can reconvene and what the goals would be and.
Yeah, I do, I do think this needs to be a little higher on the priority list. So I don't want to take too long.
Yeah, yep. Just got to, so Granby is fortunate in that it's small and a lot of people do a lot of good work, but a lot of this is the same people. So the same people that are in the strategic planning committee would be having to be on the, this, the task force too. So it's just, I think, managing that, that calendar for everybody, make sure everybody can attend.
Off the top of your head, are there grants out there for social emotional?
There are.
We just have to find them. I know there's one through SAMSU out of Northampton, but again, I think that's related more to substance abuse. So we have to start looking and see what we can do. And I think it's definitely worth checking out because I know it's, we're seeing it, large numbers. I was seeing it even in my last district before I left that.
I'm seeing it in my office and the number of referrals that, you know, that are coming into my tiny little office that I can't keep, keep up with.
Yeah. It's definitely imploding. And I think there's multiple factors to why that's happening, but it's here and, you know, it's not going away. And, you know, our kids, the physical part is, is it important, but that social, emotional and mental piece is just as vital to address. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you.
Great. So we're going to continue this conversation. Good. Last item on new business is Granby Junior Senior High School work study.
So I have Stephen and Ally here tonight to discuss what has been, over the time at Granby Junior Senior High School, a program of study, or a program within the program of study that has been sometimes used and other times not used. It was brought forward to my attention as a result of the coordinated program review, that this program was in existence, but there didn't seem to be a whole lot of process around it. And so the, Ally in particular, set to task on trying to organize and make sense of the process that we're using so that we can define it for ourselves and for you, and so that kids are participating in it, understand their obligations, and so that people that are taking on work-study students can understand their responsibilities so that the program is effective for our students. And so without any further details, I'm going to turn it over to Ally so she can fill you in on her work and how we're moving forward in that, in that program.
Is it okay if I stay here?
No, you have to go sit by the mic.
I'm joining.
If you sit over by Annabelle, you might not be on camera.
It's actually, camera only sees that section.
Awesome. We'll see that I need a haircut.
So I have some notes. So pardon me if I have notes and I refer to my notes multiple times. So I have some notes. So pardon me if I have notes and I refer to my notes multiple times.
So you did not memorize all that stuff?
Well, I tried, but I ran out of time. So. Do you all have access to some of these documents that I'm reviewing?
Yes.
So you have?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So what I just wanted to do is just take a couple minutes, two minutes or less and just kind of brief you on. What we have been working on for um in regards to policy and just tightening up a lot of the things that we're not really focused on and. Having something set in stone and in place here at Granby Junior Senior High School. So. So our continued efforts to prepare all of our students for success, okay, through an extension of our. Community service program, we're calling the work-based um program. Which is linked to our goal of providing alternative pathways for our students here. And aligned with Desi's evolving vision of college and career readiness and civic preparation. So what we have here is we have um, is providing students opportunities uh for practical work experience in a career um related field. Such as like farming and agriculture, um automotive, construction, and carpentry. And so we'd be using the resources in our community to help broaden the experiences that students would be getting. The work-based learning, um, it's industry-focused, which would provide, you know, our students here with a competitive edge upon graduation. We do have a work-based learning contract um that was created since. I believe it was, Cheryl, correct me, was it CR nine?
Uh, yes.
CR nine, okay, so that stated when we were audited, it just showed that we didn't really have anything formalized and processed for the. Um supervisors and the students to sign off on. Okay, so we created this document. Um, when Steve came on, it was one of the very first things over the summer that we had kind of worked on and put in place. And it outlines student responsibilities, mentor responsibilities, and parent responsibilities, so. A couple examples under student responsibilities would be that academic performance is priority um over the internship program. It's graded on a pass-fail basis. Uh, the students will be required to complete weekly journals. And it would be submitted two times um to their assigned guidance counselor. The students are expected to follow all um rules, policies outlined in the student handbook. They were required to provide their own transportation. They would, if the student was absent for, from school that day, they wouldn't. They wouldn't be required to attend and we would ask that they would notify our guidance counselor here by eight fifteen that morning. The students are required to sign in and out of the logbook in the main office. And would be required to do five hours per week, um allowing them to earn two, two and a half credits um per semester. The students would be permitted to complete up to ten hours per week at their site for five credits per semester, so. Really is at the discretion of guidance counselor and administration, um, the hours um allotted for each student. Student could leave for one hour at the end of the day. They could leave for two hours. Okay. The, so under mentor responsibilities, the mentor, and this is an area that was important to have tightened up as well. The mentor provide um qualified supervision and evaluation through the Massachusetts Work um Based Learning Plan, which is broken down into three different sections. I do have it, I believe that it is uploaded in the um Google Drive. Section one was focusing on the students and their foundation skills, which can be broken down into attendance and punctuality, workplace appearance. Um, motivation and taking initiatives. The second section focuses on um specific workplace and career skills and instruction. Um, for example, creativity, critical thinking, customer service, leadership. And the third section broken down into evaluation of performance and progress. So the mentor will be responsible for uh filling this out along with. The student that is enrolled in the work-based program. And lastly, parents and guardians and their responsibility and their part. Um, we had to have the parents sign off on this, that they would be agreeing um to allow their. Son or daughter to participate in the internship program and that they understand that the student will be um provide their transportation. Responsible for his or her actions while en route to and from the program. And the parent guardian understands in it, um, that students are responsible, you know, there's responsibilities associated with this and signing the contract and participating. In the insur- internship opportunity. And it requires, you know, it's just a simple signatures um. And an anti-discriminatory statement at the bottom, but this is new, that the students haven't had to fill out yet. Um, and this evaluation is a new process as well, aligned to Desi's um protocol and what they have. On, and I believe that on the memo, there's a link on the bottom if you click here. I believe Steve aligned it to Desi's um work-based learning program, so if you needed additional information, you could. But um I know Steve wanted to talk about, through one of your questions that you had, the competitive advantage that it gives our kiddos here at the school, so. I'll let Steve.
Yeah, um, so Emery over the weekend sent a couple of questions and uh, I'm happy to go through all of them. But one of them was, it was mentioned in the memo, like having a competitive advantage and what does that mean? And is it for college, is it for career? And I think. In the future, it could be for both. And I think students are gonna have opportunities in the work, in the. In the professional field that we might not be able to offer here in our building and. In order to, I gave an example today in talking to Cheryl, I said, if we connect a student with Chartwell's or food service program. So somebody might be into culinary, so that might be an opportunity for them to intern at work-based learning. But they're gonna have to go and get a serve-safe certificate and they're gonna, so they get credentials that we're not offering here, similar to. Students who are taking a dual enrollment course are getting sometimes credentials, college credits that we don't. Offer here and they're leaving here with advantage to peers that um don't have opportunities to get such. So I think that is where we're talking about, that there's a competitive advantage through experiential learning. Um, and in addition, possibly getting certificates and things like that through the work-based learning.
I think the primary idea is that, you know, if students have an interest in pursuing a. A career uh in any one of those fields that you mentioned. For shorter or longer durations right after high school, the competitive advantage as you have it here in this memo primarily refers to that, is that fair to say?
Um, I never want to box ourselves in and say that it would be only to those. Fear, I think it could potentially, we could potentially have somebody go through the computer science courses that we offer here and get to a point where. Well, we don't have another computer science, but there's an internship, so I think that's where it becomes college and career readiness, not college or career readiness.
And, and that's great. And I, you know, I had a conversation with Cheryl as well on that one, then we should really, we should box it that way. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to box it anywhere.
Yep.
We can unbox it, then that's, that's good.
Unpack it and deconstruct it and.
What, what I'm trying to understand is if we are gonna have this as part of our strategic approach to. Giving our students what they need, then we should really align it with, with something in our strategic plan. And, and from that perspective, if we're gonna say, you know what, uh, this could be a. End of high school opportunity for some, but also, I don't know, uh. Students who want to learn more about accounting or computers or this and that, we're gonna have hands-on, which is the. Which is alignment with that experiential learning concept that we talked about when we came up with the vision.
Yes.
Uh, then, then that will be great.
Yes.
Here, it just, I couldn't understand what it was, but this clarifies it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had some other questions too, I don't know if you wanted to.
I have a bunch too.
If I may, just in two, in, in our discussion, you know, one of the things um I think to understand also is. Is how to support students that may consider that um college isn't for them and they've chosen already at a very young age. To go to a career when they maybe don't realize that that career has an associate's degree uh attached to it. Um, and specialized training that may be attached to it. So working into the work-study, you know, areas where local. Um, community colleges can come and, and provide some support and some information to students that. May not have thought that, oh, you know, I actually maybe do need to have an associate's degree to move further down this um career choice that I'm making. And here are the benefits of that. Um, my son, I will use as a perfect example, um choosing SUNY Cobal Skill. To work in the John Deere Tech, um Ag Tech program. Um, you know, that was not something that came out of high school. It came out of his work at a John Deere dealership. So I think bringing that together into the school world. And helping support students who may be making that path, um choosing that path is very important. We cannot ignore. That we have students that have needs in that field, in that chosen uh pathway.
So is this open for seniors only?
Um, not necessarily. It could be open for juniors potentially too, but it would be most likely upperclassmen.
There's that component to drive too.
Yeah.
We should clarify that.
Yeah, I, well, and that's, that's why I'm asking, because I was a little confused and I think this needs to be clearly. Um, stated in this contract. Um, I don't know how I feel about, this is just my own personal opinion about juniors. You know, because, you know, it kind of goes back to this whole off-campus, people going to HCC, you know, we did a lot of back and forth on that. I, I do think it's a privilege to be able to go off-site and go to a work-study program or go to a college environment. Um, I just, I'm, I don't know how ready you are to do that junior year.
I feel like I had some, and I have that same concern too, um, when kids leave here and. Do I feel like all kids are ready and can handle an experience like this? No, I don't, but I feel like um. When we opened up the community service a little bit and to some of our students here, um, some sophomores. They did an amazing job and those were the sophomores that went to West Street and East, oh, not West Street, sorry, couldn't do that. They went to East Meadow. And I got nothing but great reviews from the teachers over there saying, wow, thank you for sharing those kids with us. They did amazing. And they were ecstatic and we're looking forward to more kids coming. And I'm like, well, the troubling thing about that is we want to be able to. Um, keep tabs on all of our kiddos, so our community service program, which is the other, the opposite side of this. For the students that will be going next door. Um, and great when West Street comes over here too, because they're. They're, they're the ones that work primarily a lot with us and they are excited and when we put out the form for our community service kiddo, they are signing up. And they were like, please, I still have three or four requests that I can't fill. Um.
That's a slightly different program though.
It is slightly, yes.
A little different than going into a professional environment, um, you know, having to drive yourself, going to a professional environment.
There's a lot of um discussion about this and I, I can create a, a, a web list serve for you. To get some of that information. Um, but again, I think it is case by case, you know, we will have students that will be successful. And then we will have students that, you know, maybe don't meet success and then what do we do?
The case by case though is when we start to get into some um, some tricky territory.
So juniors are going to HCC for dual enrollment for not full-time. So um, I guess my question is, you know, where is it that junior versus senior is ready for. Dual enrollment, but not necessarily work-study? So how do we make that determination? About when a student is, if we're not saying you may be a junior or a senior and at that, it's case by case. If, because there are criteria for.
Was that the new policy that we?
Junior, senior?
It was ju- junior, senior, or going forward?
If it was going forward.
No full-time at all.
No full-time.
No, I agree. It has to be a consistent policy.
Right.
For sure.
And, you know, the criteria for being able to participate, you know, I think.
Needs to be consistent.
That needs to be.
That was actually one of my other questions. What is the minimum academic um standard? Is it just passing? Is it, do they have to have a certain grade? In order to even qualify for this program?
Yeah, I think there's gonna be a lot of factors. I think some students, it might not be your typical. A student who you would think would be the only ones going out, because some of the students who might be struggling probably need this more than. A student, so it i- it's, it is gray, I would say, a- and it's very difficult. As hard as we could work to make it black and white, it's, there's always gonna be a shade of gray because you do need to. You know, sometimes a student that you least expect steps up and does something that, you know, you never expected. Um, and then somebody that you expected was gonna have a great experience in the workplace, it doesn't work out. Um. So there are times in my previous experience where I had no worries that the student would be successful and they weren't. And students that I really questioned and had a pit in my stomach and they did great.
Would you agree there needs to be some sort of a minimum though? I mean, I, I, I can't imagine allowing a student to have the privilege. Of going off campus if they're not passing their classes.
Yeah, I, I think a minimum certainly makes sense. I would say, especially in terms of attendance and discipline. Um, and grade-wise, yeah, I, I think you need to be, need to be passing your classes.
And that states it under the student responsibility, that they have to be.
Comes first.
Right. Well, it's, it doesn't state that the student needs to be passing. It states that academic performance will have first priority over the internship. Program. That's what I think we're talking about is we need to be very clear in whatever policy. Um, you guys decide is the best policy, it has to be clear.
Yeah, and I, I just worry about grades because grades are so subjective. Um, so sometimes I worry about. Again, not offering because maybe you did fail one class, but I, I do think to an extent, grades are. Very much subjective.
If you have a kid who's, who's, who's a good kid, who doesn't have a discipline problem, is showing up for school. And isn't the kind of kid who loves school and may be failing a couple of classes, this might be the program to pull him out of that. And that might be part of this contract that they, they would work in that we're gonna agree to this, but these are, these are your markers for success. You need to agree to this and it becomes a kind of an all-hands-on-deck rescue effort almost. But with the, with student leading the way, saying, yes, I'll take that responsibility, but I have to get out of here at noon or I'm gonna go crazy. Or whatever the case may be. Um, cause we had something like this before years ago. Um, and I had tons of friends who did, um, we called it something different back then, but. And a lot of the kids who initially signed up were failing and went out into the world and got a job and it. Just boosted their mood, it made the whole thing a little bit more manageable, it made their workload less, less homework. So I could definitely see how this would have to be case, even though we don't like case by case and we like clear policy. Kids aren't always gonna fit in on those nice clean lines.
I, I, I agree. I mean, we had the same, we had a work, I, I was, I was a part of it, um, senior year, but. There was a minimum, you had to be, you know, you had to be passing in order to, it is a privilege. It still is a, and I'm not saying that. Um, you know, you need to be getting Bs and As or Cs and, or even Ds and yes, I understand that if you're a student that. That isn't gonna go on to college, you are still a student that needs to get a high school diploma in order to, to move on to the next. Phase of life, so.
I see this as helping them. I see these kids thriving. I see them laughing and learning and teaching me things and. Coming back and sharing their experiences and when you talk with the families, you know, they are just like. So thankful, you know, and, you know, one of the parents in particular. When we offer the community service, I'll refer back to the community service and my point to students thriving, you know, we're teaching the whole student here. And one of the parents last year was just like, you're, you're saving my child. That was what her quote-unquote, you're saving my child, because if you didn't offer this for my child. We don't know where he'd be, but we're creating, we're addressing the whole child and it's so important to recognize that we're not all the same. And, you know, providing opportunities for these kids is what we're all about.
So, so then maybe, maybe the um, the compromise is that you're not. You know, you have to have some sort of a minimum average or something. I mean, there has to be a minimum standard here. I don't know.
Or, I mean, the other way to think about it is if, if we're talking about turning students around and, and using this as perhaps a lever. Maybe there's a probationary period and that, you know, here's your, here's, here's an intervention for you. We recognize that what we're doing currently isn't working for you. Here's a change, but here's a probationary period. Because if you continue down, to your point, if you continue down this academic road, you will not earn a diploma.
Right.
And so this is help for you to say, you know, work-study, community service, whichever. Here's, here's an intervention for you that can help you see how your schoolwork is impactful for you in the real world so that we can start to bring these two worlds together for you. Because you're starting to cut between the two and we can't have that happen. We want every single student to graduate, period.
Right. And however you all decide as being the specialists in this, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, you guys see it and live it every day. I'm still going to come back to my original point that you have to have some kind of minimum and it has to be clearly stated in the policy. Because we've been down the road before where there's been an exception to the rule and then the exception has turned into fifteen exceptions. And then we've had problems, right? Where we had to re-address the policy and it was, well, you know, how come Suzie got to do it? And now little Johnny doesn't, you know, it's just, it gets way too complicated. There has to be a policy.
And, and, and it's not easy to get to that policy, but let's just put our heads together and, and get there. Because I agree when the policy is not robust and it's not really, it doesn't really, um, create the right incentives, it just goes in directions that we did not intend to. And it, and I, I love the idea. In fact, I, you know, it's going to be controversial, but, uh, I, I like this idea more so than the unlimited dual enrollment, uh, stuff that we did. Because, you know, we had folks here who told us that, hey, you know, some of your classes are probably more vigorous than ours. Yet, you know, we had a lot of students who went and took classes that may not have been academically challenging to them. This has a different purpose. I have, I have two primary, uh, concerns slash, uh, requests around this. One is, let's not make it a remedy for everything. You know, students who are challenged and are having problems and, you know, students who are, who want a professional pathway. We, let's just find the right triggers so that whatever we put in place is addressing a need. And then those students who really rightfully will benefit from this, they just truly come in and benefit from it. Number two, this should align with something, especially since you guys nicely emphasized that it will, academic, uh, uh, experience will be the priority. How do we align to academic experience? Is this going to be an isolated siloed thing? Hey, you know, I'm taking all these classes, but you know, now I'm going to go and do something that doesn't align with anything else? Or as you said, if we're addressing a holistic need, is it going to be part of something else that we can offer? It may not be early on, but at least we intend to do that. Um, again, so that when we put this in place, whatever triggers we have in mind are working with, uh, what we intend to get out of this program as opposed to getting into the exceptions territory and, and doing a lot, a lot more different things than we, we wanted. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I would agree. I think this is just one club in our bag. It can't be a one-size-fits-all and we're going to just use this every time there's an issue. It's just one intervention, one opportunity that we have for the right students. And I agree, I think in our ideal scenario, I think it wouldn't necessarily be like, okay, you're going to be working with chart wells, you're going to be working at the mechanics. So we have classes all geared to those specifics. But I think having a workplace environment type class or expectations around that makes complete sense where some of those skills are going to be uniform across whatever you're doing.
And what you said earlier, um, makes a lot of sense too, that this should not be seen as, you know, students who do not have academic, certain academic capabilities are just going into this. This can become something, uh, much bigger than that and aligns again with that experiential learning. And it can align with any type of, uh, academic experience that we're offering in the district.
Yep.
Uh, I, you know, probably there are limitless, uh, examples. There, there, there used to be and everybody was talking about their experience. My, uh, one year of high school experience, uh, you know, in, in the US system, uh, in upstate New York. My host brother used to go to this, uh, school called BOCES. It, it stood for something, B-O-C-E-S. And there was a bus that took all these students who were going to do something. And we had our own shop in the school for a lot of things, from carpentry to mechanics and all that stuff. But they were going to do something different. But at the end, it always aligned with something that they had started doing in, in the school. And they were getting something a little more vigorous when they went to BOCES. So if it turns into something like that, it's, it's great. It's, it's really helping. And again, let's not just stop there with, you know, with the, uh, vocational, uh, uh, what they can get at a vocational school, but we can go beyond that as well and just make it a truly experiential learning, uh, environment.
And I think that's, you know, in some ways, the old-school ways worked pretty well. You know, when I was in high school, there were three tracks. And it was college, it was the trades, or it was going out into the workforce right after high school. And, and there wasn't one that was looked more favorably than the other track. Whatever track you went to, it was just your choice. So I agree with Emery that I would love to see this as just, here's another track for you. If you're not interested in college, college isn't the right choice for you, here's another option. And giving our students as many options as possible, I think is, is fantastic.
Yeah.
And I also think that, again, no matter what track you take, there's going to be expectations. There's going to be standards. Um, you know, we all have to live with minimum standards and, and one last thing. Just, there's a word in here. What's that?
I always said minimum standards.
Yes, yes. Uh, on here it says, one journal will be submitted halfway through the semester and one journal should, should be submitted at the end of the semester. This is where I think it would be, it needs to be crystal clear.
Got it.
You know, must be submitted at the end of the semester.
Yes.
You know, I think it's in, in language matters and, you know.
So I have a question. Is there any, should there be any screening? Are these, I put your perspective requires to make sure that they're going to a relatively safe place? Is it a legitimate place, things like that? Is that, is that going to be part of it?
Yes. Yes, it needs to be part of the process.
And then, um, my other question was, if something happens with the employment, um, maybe it's beyond the control of the student, maybe there's downsizing or, or something. Is there going to be an opportunity to get the kids back into classes rather than just come back and go to study hall or something weird, crazy like that?
We don't really have study halls, so it would be placed, they would be placed, um, yes. We would place them in a class when they would come back or we would see if we could place them somewhere else in community service.
Okay.
Which is obviously the sister of, you know, this program. So, especially with the new building coming, like I said, the teachers are ecstatic over there. And I could foresee lots of additional kids going over there. So if that was a situation, we would find, try to find something very similar, um, whether it would be a class, another placement, um, or a community service.
Okay.
What are some examples of what students are doing at East Meadow, for instance?
Well, at Annabelle.
Aligning with this, this.
Okay. Well, Annabelle. Annabelle and I have had multiple conversations. Um, so Annabelle works in the library. Um, and we had conversations with Ms. Stanton too about Annabelle taking on some responsibilities to work in the office over there, in the super's office with Ms. Stanton as well. So, um, next door, we have students working in the main office, assisting Anne Marie, um, the secretary over there. We have, um, it's okay to mention names, right? Can you mention student names?
You guys know that, right?
Not students.
Not students.
Not the students.
Just the jobs they're doing. We have a student that goes to, um, West Street that I have gotten so many reviews about this student being very successful over there, assisting teachers as a helper. Um, I've walked over myself and seen kids reading and helping kids read one-on-one um, in classrooms as almost similar to like a para. Um, and helping with some behaviors and things like that, you know. Just, and some of those kids are purposely placed in those that have expressed interest in education. And they said, you know, I'd like to be an elementary school teacher. So that's a perfect placement for those kiddos. So they can see if, you know, elementary field and education, somewhere they, you know, have that interest. Um, some students say, you know, I just want to, I just want to help out the custodians. So some are sanding, you know, some are sweeping, some are cleaning windows, re-cleaning windows. Because they have to learn the proper way to clean windows with the old-school newspapers. But, um, so those are some skills that they do. So we have kids all over. I have some kiddos that work with me, um, out in the fields. And they're like, right now, they are working on the volatile nets to try to revamp this area over here right outside these windows. Um, we have some out in the back helping, you know, some learning lining and how to do those types of things.
Peer tutoring?
Peer tutoring, yes. We have two students in peer tutoring right now, upstairs in math, helping out upstairs. And, I mean, it's endless possibilities for their, for the students. And we're starting to see more teachers request students. So we put out a request two times, one at the end of the school year, which everyone's pretty much checked out. But you still get the early ones to put in because, and they can, um, when they fill out their requests, they can put certain things, you know, whether they would be working one-on-one with students or what they would be doing. And, um, sometimes they request specific students that they had before. Um, so, but those are a couple of examples of things, things that the kids would be doing.
Can I just tell you that when some of these high school kids come over to West Street and they go into the classrooms, they're very stand-offy. By the time their stint is done, they have bonded with those kids. It is just amazing to see. The kids will listen to them, follow them, do what is requested. I'm thinking of one, um, young man who was working with preschoolers. I watched him the first time he went in that class. And now this is a very tall young man and there's kids up against me. You should see him. He is in a sandbox with those kids playing. And the kids adore him. It, just to see the change in these kids when they come over, it's amazing to see. And it doesn't matter that if they're preschoolers or third graders. They look forward to that person every day at that time.
And, and that's wonderful and I really like the fact that students are learning to, you know, to,
Yeah.
Do community service, learn civic involvement, civic engagement and all that. That's great. But that is our community service program. Versus a more professionally focused oriented internship program, right? So there will be, I mean, there will be some differentiators, I'm assuming. It's not just going to be, you know, if you want to do internship, let's go next door. Just let's line the fields. It will be based on the student's request and need, right?
Yeah, and I would say based on career interest surveys and all, yeah, and all of that. And of course, it's, means that we have to continue to build relationships with community organizations. And I think even outside of Granby, just so there's, um, additional options for students.
So how do we go about that? I mean, that sounds like a pretty big undertaking.
Yeah, knocking on doors, talking to people and sometimes, sometimes, sometimes it's based on a student.
I'll send an alco.
A student worked somewhere, worked for the Parks and Rec over the summer and they really enjoyed it. And they want to continue in that field. So sometimes the relationship develops organically like that. Like, well, we never even thought about that, but they're coming to us and, um, pitching it to us, so.
So my, my almost cliched question that I ask in similar situations everywhere, not only here. Do we, and that was one of my questions. Do we know best practices or examples from other school districts that may help us identify, uh, potential employers, potential locations? What they learned from their experience so we don't have to really go through the same thing if they learned it and we can use it?
Yeah, I, I would say yes and no. I, I think like, one of the best ones that I've seen and known is in Chicago, but they have resources that we clearly don't. So there was like students working all over the city in different, at IBM and things like that. So, um, but that was through, you know, years and years of building relationships. There's some smaller, um, ones. My previous district is like rolling this out, you know, in the past probably three years. And it's, some things have been successful and some things haven't. I, I don't think that that's a model of success at this point, but I think there's some good things happening there. Um, and I don't know, to answer your question honestly, I don't know of other, you know, specific suburban or rural communities that have a robust work-based learning program. Um, but that's something that I've started to look since I got your email. So in terms of like, what's the best model in the Commonwealth or in the region for a school system in Granby, that I don't know.
Okay. And that may be a good thing for us to know. And I'm assuming that there must be something since there is a Massachusetts work-based learning program.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, I mean, again, just,
Yeah, I agree.
I'm a huge proponent of learning from other people's experiences. And I'm talking about positive experiences, obviously. It may be a good place for us to start.
The answer to that question in three years will be Granby's.
You know what? We would love to have.
I like that confidence. Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, especially if, you know, other districts are trying, but they don't know how to make it work and we do.
Well, and I think, yeah.
And I think the collaboration piece, that piece that I'm hearing from you too is like, how are, how are we working with our neighbors around? Like, what are they offering students? What do we have here that we can offer? I think that is a trend that I'm seeing in some of the smaller school communities as well. It's like, how are you not just sharing best practices, but sharing resources and sharing opportunities? So Belcher Town might have something that's already working there, but we might have something that they don't. And how do we kind of work together to offer those students experiences?
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, um, the Department of Education's, um, re-emphasis on career readiness. We, we will begin to see best practices being shared. So you will begin to see symposiums on, uh, work-based learning. Um, because it's become a larger part of what we're doing in schools, um, with the shift away from heavy accountability and, and, um, uh, that side of education. The recognition that there's other things that we need to be, be doing. Um, so, you know, we see it in curriculum. You know, the, the symposiums on curriculum where districts come and share best practices. And then over time, Desi brings those together into what they determine are best practices in the Commonwealth. So I, I would not be surprised if you see those kinds of things coming. And to Stephen's point, in three years will be a role model, which would be fabulous.
And, uh, since you mentioned Department of Education, you know, I, I like the fact that they come up with these, uh, catchphrases, career readiness and college prep and all that stuff. Which, when it works well, it works well. But I feel like that became, uh, uh, um, a way for them to forget about their primary responsibility of supporting classroom education from financial to their mandates and everything, just overburden everybody and then start talking about career readiness as if all the students are expected to get out of high school with the stress of finding a job, you know, once they, you know, they graduate. So they, um, I'm, I'm not too impressed with what the Department of Education has been doing at any level, federal to state. But I think this is something that we can, to your, to your point, we can, uh, make work. And if we can make it work and become an example, that's one of the things that we really want to do. That's a differentiator for us. That would be a great thing. Of course, you know, just like we discussed, our, our framework should be clear enough that everyone knows what the expectations are, what they're going to get out of it, uh, how they can apply to it, when some things don't go as expected, what's going to happen. We are prepared, they are prepared and this will make it work for everybody.
Yep. And absolutely. And I think I, and I know Ally, appreciate the feedback because that's how we're going to grow and we're going to get to a point where it does work. So we'll go back to the drawing board a little bit and see you in a couple of weeks.
And I want to be clear, I don't want there to be a differentiation that if you are pursuing work-study and career readiness, that you are not prepared for college. There is no reason that a student that comes through the Granby Public Schools shouldn't be ready for college work. There is no differentiation. It's just what the student is choosing to pursue. So that at the end of 12th grade, if they're choosing career, if embedded in that career is the need for an associate's degree or further learning, they're prepared to do that. So the threshold or the, the criteria we have is that you will be prepared for college or career, whichever you choose, because career may necessitate college work. Um, it, it, there, there shouldn't be this, you know, oh, you know, I'm going to go down this path and I'll never have to pick up a manual or a textbook or pursue further learning. And that's, I think, important for all of our students to understand.
I think that's lowering the potential for, for a student, you know, as opposed to saying, you know, this is just the choice you're making, you know, and you get to-
You know, this is just the choice you're making, you know, and you get to choose that path.
Right.
And here are the minimum standards for you in order to choose that path, in the same way that there are standards if you choose this path or you choose that path. You know, it's, it's basically us saying, we believe in whatever choice you make.
Yes.
And here are the expectations as you head down that road.
I, I think that's exactly what we're saying. That students should not feel like, hey, you know, I'm doing something like this, so I'm different and I'm not capable.
Or less than.
That's right.
Or less than, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the experience and exposure piece means too, it's not just. Well, I wanna be an auto mechanic, I'm gonna work in my local, um, like, you can work for NASCAR, like. And there, in your experience, like, you could, you might meet somebody, right, like, I don't have any connections at NASCAR. I'm in an education my whole life, so, like, but in the field, you may connect, and that networking piece, that social piece. That comes along with it as well, and you still might choose to work in the mom and pop shop, and shop, and there's nothing wrong with that, but. Knowing that there's other options out there, I think is crucial.
Because you said that tomorrow, you're gonna have tap.
And conversely, I just like wanted to add, I once had to work for a. Um, director of a program who had gone from pre-K through PhD without ever having worked. Uh, it was not a successful situation. So even if your plan is to go through and become, you know, a board-certified surgeon, having a job in the real world. Would be great. For everybody.
Plus, plus there's no, there's no saying that regardless of what they think when they graduate, they probably. There's a good chance they're gonna end up back in school at some point.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I finished school the last time, four times in my life.
For the last time. Congratulations.
There's another need for.
Yep.
Well, the only way I look at it is, you know, we can only grow from here.
Yeah.
And so that's the frame of mind that we've had for a few months now.
So, any other questions? I will, uh. Initiate with this, thank you both very much for bringing it to us. Um, and, and making this a conversation and exchange of ideas.
Yeah.
And not just, you know, hey, here's something and, you know, uh. Say yay or nay, it's just, it's, it's, it's really good for us to get involved in this because this really aligns with. With all the different things that we're hoping to do in the, in the near future and beyond, uh, here in this district.
Well, and I think it's a, this is a really good example, although it can become sort of murky and muddy about. How a group works together to talk about and problem solve and to come up with a better. Policy, process, product, because all of us are thinking about it, and. I, I hope that students watch these dialogues, um, because while it can be. While it can appear to be a challenge and sort of a push and a pull and a, you know. The, at the end of the day, we're all trying to create the very best Granby Public Schools for kids. Um, and that, that's what this is about, um, and it isn't about just signing a piece of paper.
Well, you can't get to that without the challenge and the push and pull.
Right, right.
Ultimately, that's, that's real life.
Sure is.
It's all push and pull.
It sure is.
Yeah.
So, well, like I said, thank you so much for your feedback and.
Thanks. No, um, well, I have a friend from Southwick and he does this, it's like CTEC or something, and it's like machining and stuff. And he like takes like a bus with like a bunch of other kids and they all go to a thing. I don't know, like the specifics and stuff, but like maybe they have something you guys could look at.
Thank you. Yes. Can borrow your pen again?
Yeah.
It's purple too.
So there's CTEC and Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, so we are actually looking at both of those. Um, they are tuition-based programs, but they may align more with what we're thinking about in terms of. Having Granby students do more of their academic work on campus and then have. Another pathway, which may be a half-day vocation, um, which would be more specific to what you're talking about, so. Thank you for reminding me and I will go back and.
Maybe at the end of this process, we can um, have the students. Come in and share, you know, their experience.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, that would be awesome. So you can hear it firsthand from them, you know, we hear them every day. Love them, but maybe that'd be great, so we can.
Yeah.
Have them here.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
This late? This is early. Sorry.
We are sticking to, to our, to our meeting, right?
We are.
We're gonna be done before two hours.
Yes? Wow.
Uh, you just jinxed it.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't, we're gonna make it.
Knock on wood.
Do you have some.
I do, and I'll do it quickly, it's in your folder, I will put it up with the others on the website.
What?
Uh, we were able to tour the new building this past week, this past week, wow, it's amazing, like. It's so exciting, um, the project continues to amaze us all, thank you to everyone who has been involved from the very beginning, it predates me. I think it predates some of us here, um, us, um. So thank you to everyone who has been involved from the very beginning and those who have joined the journey along the way. A special thank you to Mr. Latoy and his staff. Uh, the students and the families of East Meadow who have weathered the various construction elements of the project with patience and flexibility. Um, I still can remember the paver outside the window at the library that shook my computer off. Um, over the summer, so I can only imagine, uh, what it felt like if you were in East Meadow. Uh, it was very intense, so thank you to the community, um, and to staff and students for being patient. The inside of the building is coming along and there will be a, uh, mo- model classroom ready in the near future, so teachers will be. Touring that and giving some input as to making sure everything is appropriate for instruction. Um, it's just really an exciting time, um. It's hard to imagine that the first month of school is over and we are in October. Um, I wanted to thank the school committee for their conscientious effort at, uh. Creating school committee goals that are focused to the school committee's work this year. And so I'm excited to help the committee, uh, finish those goals and work on those goals this year. Um, and lastly, I wanted to thank the, uh, police, fire and DPW for the tour of the public safety complex. Um, the students were captivated by all of the various component parts, um, and were very appreciative and so are we, so thank you.
Well, thank you, this is great, I like the pictures on your reports.
Actually, we, we, we did skip old business under school committee goals.
No, there are only two things, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Get there. Um, collaborative?
Yeah, we met, uh, real quick, we met la- uh, last week. A lot of it was the voting of the. The treasurer and the chairman. There was, um, a few things though, um. One, I think Gateway Regional left the collaborative, but now they wanna come back. Or at least they're talking about coming back, so we voted to allow them to start the process to possibly come back.
Do you know why they left?
Uh, I don't, no.
Uh.
They talked about it, they said it was on good terms, but. Uh, they didn't really specify what the reason was why they left. Um, a more interesting conversation. Where regarded charter school, there's a specific charter school that I think was found, uh. Uh, lacking in a, a state report and they needed to, uh, to enhance. Now their program some, and they, they reached out to the collaborative to. To, uh, do some, some assessments and make some recommendations, that was part of what the state said they had to do. Um, and there was a, a lot of conversation about whether or not we should. Do that, since it's for a charter school, but, um, in the end. We did vote to approve that.
Hmm.
Uh, the reason that they brought it up to the board was because it. Was one school, but it had the potential to be three, three schools within that, within, within that same structure. And they, and they thought, uh, since it was so large, that they just wanted to put it in front of the board for approval. There was also another discussion in, um. Uh, when, so when they went into executive session. About the possibility of another, uh, you know, property, but I really can't go into it too much right now. You know, in the, in the public session here.
Another what?
Another property.
They have, um, outgrown.
Oh.
Uh, the current space, and so they're in a couple of satellite spaces, so.
Free and open.
So there's, there's, there's discussion about how to best proceed to bring services back together and. Move through that process of, um, investigating and you know it better than anybody, you know, the feasibility studies and the. You know, getting to the boards and, you know.
Where are their two locations, I know.
One in Northampton.
I know, that's the one I think I went to, to the, charting the course.
They, um, they rent, they rent two and then they own that, that main place on, uh, I don't know.
Holly Street, are they all in Northampton?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, have three separate locations in Northampton?
Okay. And I think they're all within a certain number of blocks.
Wow.
Didn't really get that far away from what he's.
Yeah, I can see where they wanna consolidate.
Mm-hmm.
But then there's questions like the. The price of the land in that area is going up.
Yeah.
And, you know, uh. How feasible is it to try to stay there versus, you know, looking elsewhere, but then if you move elsewhere, then the impact on the staff and. And some support things that they're trying to do, right? Becomes more complicated sometimes.
Might be an empty school in West Street.
I said that already. At the superintendent meeting.
Perfect place for some municipal offices. All we need is a highway, you know, like an on-off ramp that all goes.
Yeah, and, and, and just as a, a side note, this whole conversation came up because. I think they've been eyeing the property that's adjacent to theirs, I think they're paying them rental for the, for part of the parking lot. And I guess, I guess now it's potentially up for sale, and that's what kind of prompted all of this conversation.
Well, they should do it now, but Amazon comes over, it's gonna be much more expensive.
Aren't they going to Colorado? They're gonna end up in Colorado. Too much traffic.
You should just warn me when I turn microphones around.
Oh, no, I just jacked it up.
Good. Um. West Street Building Committee, Cheryl?
I, yes, I attended, uh, the, I don't usually give this report.
No, you don't, but I wasn't there last time, so.
So, let's see, on time still, um.
On budget.
On budget still, um, still, um. Making timelines for the move in February, so there's been discussion about the moves, um. There was discussion about, uh, the exterior cladding, um, and, uh, how. It's starting to look and feel like a school, um, and how exciting that is, um. There actually were not, uh, decisions that had to be made, so.
Good.
It was more of an informational update.
So, so there's still, there's still no real concerns about what they might find?
Not yet, no, um, there was some discussion about the potential of, um, because we're under budget, what we might be able to do. Um, that was taken off the list, so some furniture and fixtures, um, s- technology, there, there were a few things that. Are, um, pending, um, that we can, uh, purchase and implement. If everything goes according to plan, um, but the discussion, uh, really was, let's wait and see what happens. Once East Meadow, um, is, the renovation begins there, because that's where you're gonna potentially see some changes. Um, and some, hopefully, not too many, but, you know, some things that you didn't expect. Like the fact that the, the waveboard, which is like a sound sort of reduction, doesn't quite fit. The granite where the old bulletin board was, um, so there's like, you know, there's like a gap at the bottom, so those kinds of things that. You know, until you pull things down, you're not gonna know, so.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, policy?
Um, nothing, we're gonna meet tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, we worked hard on policy.
Yes. We're, it's continuation of B, right?
Yes.
Okay. So a couple of quick notes on strategic plan and the school committee goals. Uh, the school committee met last, was it last week? Last week. Uh, last week to, um. One, to self-evaluate, number two, to, based on that, to see whether or not there are, uh, any changes to our goals. Uh, that we had talked about a while ago, so now that we are, uh, getting ready to. Um. Revamp our strategic plan, this becomes the school committee's, uh, starting point. And we came up with, uh, four, was it four? Four goals for the school committee. Um, I don't know if we have to read them, but, uh, are, are these posted somewhere, are these considered final for us?
Nope, uh, you would be, uh, considering them because, um, this was. Uh, the goals as written were the compilation of the conversation, and the conversation had like eight or nine sort of. Kind of buckets, and so I was hoping the committee, uh, could take a look at these, make sure it captures the conversation. Um, and if there needed to be any added, uh, or, or, or talked about, um, revising any of these. But then the school committee would vote these as their goals.
Okay.
Um.
So very generically then, uh, one of them is about our policy review.
Mm-hmm.
Which is in progress anyway, but the importance of that is for us to really. Uh, make sure that all the policies that govern this school district are, uh. Are in place and also they're in compliance with all the latest, uh, changes in the legisla- uh, um. In the laws, NG, are we about by NGL, yeah. Uh, the second one related to, uh, procedures and protocols, which, um, are. Old in some areas and do not reflect what we are currently doing, so the handbook will be updated. Uh, to make sure that that reflects what we, uh, are currently doing, and then, uh, there will be. Uh, an effort to make sure that the new school committee members, as they come on board, they have some reference, uh, uh, they can look at. So that they can hit the ground running to the extent possible. Um, the third one is related to the budget process, um, even though there were some good conversations and dialogue with the community and within. The school committee, uh, the last, uh, few budget cycles, now we are, uh, looking for ways to. Uh, create more documentation and publish the budget. And then, uh, share the budget process with the community, so everybody understands what it is and how it relates to the strategic. Uh, goals of the, of the school district. And finally, um, this is something that we talk about a lot, but we have not seen, uh, the outcomes of it, this is related to the community relations. So we're gonna create and implement a community relations plan, uh, that will include, uh, communication. Uh, and other types of engagement, uh, with the community. And when we review these and finalize, we're gonna share them with the, uh, with everyone, the public.
And the, um, budget and budget process one, that is going to include the timeline.
Yes.
Um, and it's gonna.
The meetings with the town too, yep.
And I'm assuming we're gonna do this sooner than later, maybe next time, because the budget timeline, we wanted to put in. Uh, in process as soon as possible, that should, that should really be driving this year's budget process too, right?
You know, for the most part, you did vote that, that process and timeline for budget.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're waiting for, uh, the October SIMS data, uh, to finalize and. Then we will have, um, information to share with finance, because the majority of grants have come in. Uh, so we'll have the numbers relative to that, we'll have enrollment numbers, um, and so then we can share with finance and the select board. What, if there's been any changes, uh, to the.
We submitted our numbers to the state, correct?
Yes.
For October first?
Uh.
Or today, October second?
They took a snapshot today.
Okay.
And so we have this window to, um, verify.
Okay.
Um, and, and then we're kind of shut down, uh, for about, uh, ten days. Um, and then we go back and, and start to, uh. Reput kids into the system if we have anybody move in or anybody leave in that transition period.
So can we have the enrollment numbers, numbers next time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So then what are the next steps on, on these goals?
We vote them.
I think we're all just gonna take a look at them this time and then offer any feedback.
That, that, that was my understanding, that's why I was all confused, we should not have anything more than unless there are some proposed changes to what we have in this document. Uh, review one more time and vote next time and then make them our official goals and then pursue those, okay?
And do, do we need to wait till next time?
Um.
Well, Marie's not here.
Marie's.
Oh, yeah, we probably want all five of us, right? Yeah?
Yep, so let's just wait one more, one more cycle and then we'll vote on that. Um, as far as the strategic. Um, as far as the strategic plan, repeating what you said earlier, I don't know if anybody watches it. Uh, but I hear that there were over four, four hundred and fifty, over four hundred and fifty hits to our YouTube, uh, June meeting. Granted, there was some budget-related, uh, conversation there, but that's, that's the highest, uh, uh, hit for any, uh, meeting, uh, so far that is posted on YouTube from Granby. So that's good. So anyway, with that, if anybody would like to be part of the strategic planning committee or strategic planning task force?
Task force.
Um, please reach out to, uh, Kathy Harrop, uh, the, at the superintendent's office. Uh, and she will walk you through the process. If you forget the phone num- phone number, it's one eight-hundred Kathy Harrop. Is that what it is? Yeah, I don't, I don't know the, uh, phone number from the top of my head, but I'm sure they can find it on our website.
Speak up, Kathy.
Four-six-seven-seven-one-nine-three.
Seven-one-nine-three, thank you. Four-six-seven-seven-one-nine-three. Uh, I think that's all we had for our, uh, open session. Anything else that we did not cover or anything for the upcoming business that we should include next time? No? Okay, so with that.
You have two minutes?
Sorry.
Say it again?
Nothing. You got two minutes.
We will, uh, vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
The MP comes, the I.
Jennifer Curran, I.
Emre Avr, and I.
Yeah, Mike Simpson, I.
Thank you. Have a good night.